Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this 11th day of July 2022. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening and get right into tonight's agenda. The first item on the agenda being consideration of the council minutes of the meeting that we held on June 22nd of 2022. Okay, we have a first and a second. Council, the motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to the minutes as they were presented in your packet? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Public comment. Amy, anybody?
No public comment.
Okay. Counsel, the next thing on the agenda is adoption of the city of Somersville's 2030 comprehensive plan. As we've had much discussion in the past, and I want to give a big shout out to the Planning and Zoning Committee and you council members that participated in this, being on that committee or attending the meetings. Again, this is always a work in progress. There's a lot of great information in here. I will ask the city recorder to attest that all of the proper protocol has been followed.
Yes, sir.
And we are ready for the adoption of this 2030 comprehensive plan. So therefore, I'll entertain a motion. We have a first and a second.
Stevie first.
Yep. Okay, counsel, any comments or anything before we make it official?
That was a good long process. Those of you that were involved and attended those meetings, that was my first go around on it, and that was very educational and awesome.
Yeah.
Great job.
And I guess we should also give a shout out to WVU. They kind of put the process together and walked us through it. And you know, as we sit here tonight, I know that this thing endured a pandemic, and of course, it was about, what, two years ago we started this process? So some might ask, it's supposed to be a 10-year plan, that's why we are in 2022 and approving the 2030 comprehensive plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. This is the official comprehensive plan for the city of Somersville 2030. The next thing on the agenda, counsel, would be the second reading of Article 1711 West Virginia State Building Code adoption. This is what we do anytime there's been an update to the International Building Code. This directive is basically sent down to us from the state fire marshal to be compliant with that code. And of course, we had the first reading at the last meeting, so I'll entertain a motion for what would be the second reading and adoption of the 1712.02 additions, insertions, and changes to the West Virginia State Building Code. We have a first and a second. Counsel, is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. The next item on the agenda, counsel, would be the first reading of an ordinance approving the city of Somersville Home Rule Written Plan and Application. I'm going to try to read this and not stumble through it. I think it's important we put it out there for our viewers and to the public. An ordinance authorizing the city of Somersville to submit to the municipal home rule board an application and written plan to allow the city to participate in the permanent municipal home rule program consistent with West Virginia Code 5-1-5A. Whereas in 2007, the West Virginia Legislature enacted West Virginia Code 8-1-5A known as Municipal Home Rule Pilot Program. And whereas the participation in the home rule program by the city of Somersville, a Class III municipality, would give the city unique flexibility to apply local solutions to local problems benefiting the greater community, including residents, visitors, and businesses. And whereas, the city of Somersville desires to submit an application and written plan as attached hereto the municipal home rule board requesting approval to participate in the permanent municipal home rule program. And whereas, the provisions of Senate Bill 4 require that all municipalities participating in the home rule program shall pay an annual assessment of $2,000 for the operation and administration of the municipal home rule board. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Somersville that Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to submit to the home rule board in accordance with the provisions and requirements of West Virginia Code 8-1-5A as amended, the application and written plan, and to request that the board approve the application written plan, thereby allowing the city to participate in the permanent municipal home rule program. Section 2, the mayor and city officers are further authorized to do all things reasonable necessary to obtain approval of the city's application and written plan, including but not limited to payment of $2,000 annual assessment if and when such assessment is made by the home rule board. Section 3, the ordinance shall be effective upon passage after second reading and public hearing. And of course, you can see this is the first reading. We'll have the second reading and public hearing at the next city council meeting. So I'll entertain a motion. Got a first and a second. Any questions or discussion? Okay, counsel, I will tell you that I'm slated to give a presentation and appear before the home rule board in October. And all of the processes are set up for that appointment that I will actually present the application and plan and give a presentation to the home rule board. So we have a first and a second. No further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. That's the first reading. Okay, counsel, the next item on the agenda, Police Department Contract, and this is for retention. I've got some additional correspondence I would like to pass out to you, counsel. First of all, if you would all take one of these. Jay, did you bring, did you bring one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the next thing I'd like to pass out is kind of update to the Somersville data on there because I felt it was important to add some information to what you see on that top line as Somersville. The first thing I'd like to do, counsel, is speak to the agreement that was presented to you in your packet as a draft. I was out last week on vacation, and so therefore, I talked briefly with the attorney, but I did not get a chance to do a follow-up that I discussed with him that I wanted to have today. Our schedules today just kind of hit and missed, and we did not get to have a conversation. This contract basically needs some changes to it. The core of this agreement that would be signed between the city of Somersville by our chief, Jay Nowak, and an applicant or an individual that we have qualified and is certified to be a police officer for the city, we're down two. What this is, is a $10,000 bonus agreement where the officer gets a $10,000 bonus if he agrees to this contract, which would basically commit him to the city of Somersville for four years. The terms of this contract would be a $10,000 bonus. $4,000 would be paid immediately upon the officer being certified. So what that means if, in the situation where we might hire an uncertified person, they would not receive the $4,000 bonus until what point in time they graduate from the academy and are certified. So they would be paid the $4,000 once they're certified, and then on every anniversary, $2,000 for the next three years, which would total $10,000, but be a four-year commitment with the Somersville Police Department. The changes that need to be made, first of all, the first part of this contract speaks to what we make an uncertified police officer sign. And so if we hire somebody uncertified and put them on payroll, which right now, Jay, could you speak to when the next class available for an uncertified person would be at the academy?
Available, the next one is August, but it's already full. Then they're going to have two in January, and one of them is already full, and the second one's getting closer.
So if we were to hire an officer today, we wouldn't even be able to get him to the academy until January, somebody that's uncertified. So the first part of this contract speaks to the agreement that we always sign with somebody that's uncertified, that we go out and buy all the equipment, you know, the bulletproof vest that fits them, all their uniforms, and then of course, if they don't stay with us and we put them through the academy, upon graduation, they have to stay one year, or they have to pay back expenses on a pro-rata basis, whatever they cancel out in that first year. So if we put all that expense out to somebody and they get certified, and then they quit on us or go to another department, we've always had this in place where it's a pro-rata deal where we get those fees back. And we've actually had to use this a couple of times where we've had certified guys and they got certified by us and then found a job down the road that paid more money and moved on us. So we did have a situation, actually went to court with one young man and got a judgment, payroll judgment on him to get our money back. So if we pay to certify them, they have to stay with us one year. Now, it very well could be that we're hiring somebody that don't want the bonus and say, I'll sign this, you know, get me certified, I'll sign this one-year deal, not the bonus deal. Okay, but the bonus is a deal we're offering, I can't imagine, but that would be the deal. If somebody says, no, I don't want to commit to you four years, then we would hire them just like we would any other officer if they are the one that's weeded out through the process of selection that's handled by the Civil Service Board and the Chief of Police. So what is wrong in this contract is, on this bonus, I want the language to read that if we pay you the bonus and you leave in that four years, you pay 100% of the bonus back. It's not a pro-rata deal. So I'm gonna, I've already talked to Greg, but I need, you know, we didn't get a chance to meet today. There are some changes I want to make to this contract, so it's not for approval tonight, it's for discussion to make sure that you all are on board with it. So the additional information that you were provided tonight, Jay, did you get this other sheet that I have?
I did not get this.
Here, let me give you this one. So the other information that I felt was important that we laid before you, counsel, is, you know, one always wonders when we do something, what others are doing. And so, you know, what you have before you tonight is, I asked Jay, and he diligently did, went out and got a bunch of information, so we had it for comparison. And so what I would rather you do when you look at the city of Somersville is use the single page that I provided you, because I went back and we will give at some point in time this year the 3% increase that is in the budget. Technically, what I'm waiting on, counsel, to give that is for the revenues to line out with the utilities because of where we're at with the utility revenue right now until we're at the finish line and the rate increase is actually being applied, at what point in time then, across the board, it's always been that when we budget and give pay raises, it's done across the board. So this is, this Somersville Police Department pay analysis shows you what the rate would be with the 3% increase. And also, I think it's important, and it's part of income, it's been part of income, you know, this has been a program that went on long before I arrived, and you know, I can attest to, this is my 16th year, and every year, we've done the one-time pay adjustment. And so I think you have to factor that in as revenue. So what that does, when you look at the patrolman certified, that's when you're on this, back on this paper, it says Somersville, the certified PFC makes, or the certified patrolman makes When you run that over, it's actually $45,283 when you take into consideration the pay raises we've got coming and the one-time pay adjustment that they get every year. And so then you can do the rest of the comparisons on down the line and see that those numbers are bumped up a little bit when you take both the rate increase that's been approved but not given and the one-time pay adjustment. So is everybody on board with that? Is there any questions about that? Okay. So then, as you can see, we've got some comparisons that you could look at. You've got Fayetteville, Oak Hill, Willing, Charleston, you've got the West Virginia State Police doing a little different. Their starting salary is $55,784. So what I like to do is kind of bring it to home. You can see the city of Fayetteville, our starting, go back over to this other sheet, is 45,283. Theirs is 50,440. Bump down to Oak Hill, you can see they're just neck and neck. Ours is still the 45,283. Oak Hill is 50,400. And then you can see as it bumps up as it goes across. Amazingly, what amazes me is you take a city like Willing, and you know, our starting salary, if you bump over here and look at this 45,283, Willing's is 44,033. And then you bump down, look at Charleston's, and you know, some of the things that I noticed on these bigger cities, especially on Charleston, is if you look at it, on the low end, we beat Charleston, and then on the high end, they beat us. And I can tell you that not once but twice since I've been mayor, I made adjustments to rationale those equalities out, meaning that it's, you know, that it makes more sense from the top to the bottom. It makes it, you know, we have a more fair pay scale. It's not like the guys at the top are making a lot more than the guys at the bottom. I mean, as you can see, even with our pay scale, a patrolman makes $45,000 all the way up to captain who makes $58,000. So anyway, there's some comparisons. The other thing that's also included for you, counsel, is you can see that out of this list of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, I mean, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 of us are currently offering bonuses. And of course, you know, we're included in that list, but it's yet to be approved by you all, which I'm anticipating won't be till the next council when we get that contract So I just open it up for discussion.
How many are you short on that?
And all the way at the bottom there, you can see we've listed the county. Theirs works a little bit different, and that's why those years are included, because we used actual corporal to corporal, city of Somersville to county, and they get a, they actually get a longevity pay that's added every year. And so you can still see, you know, even with their longevity, I guess it's about sergeant, the sergeants' pay is pretty much similar to our sergeant's pay, but you can see that sergeant has 19 years. Our sergeants would probably have closer to nine years.
Are we only looking at the bonus situation right now, or are we looking?
Only looking at the bonus situation. I am not right now at all considering, this just to give you some stuff to look at.
Well, I understand. I just don't know. I mean, I don't know. When I think about giving a bonus versus, I mean, if all of our guys are getting paid this much less than the other departments, and should we not consider that in too?
No, I'm not willing to do that at this time, at all.
The one thing concerns me a little bit, Jay, is how do your guys feel about giving a uncertified guy a $4,000 base salary increase, which puts him up to a corporal's pay?
Not happy.
Well, and I'm sure they're not.
Yeah.
But how do you, how do you rate that?
Yes, that's the question. How do you?
I mean, are we better off giving the current officers more money and letting a new guy wait his turn? Or, I mean, I don't understand.
That's what I was wondering, because I can't, I mean, I.
I'm not proposing to raise officer pay.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, I'm like Chuck, I can't imagine a bonus going over very well if that's going to bump them up to basically that first couple of years being making what some of the officers who've been here while we're making.
Yeah. So the first year would, so you take that, you take that certified guy, and he gets, let's work off these numbers here, and he gets a $4,000 bonus. So that's going to give him 49 that one year, and then the next year, he's going to go back down to 47, 47, and 47. So it's still going to make him a PFC pay. Of course, eventually, by that time, he'd be a PFC, so probably by the time he got his last one, it would bump him up closer to 49, closer to corporal's pay. But the other thing of it is, is they are committed to us for four years. They can't leave. So yes, it's going to give them a spike in pay, but they're also going to be on a contract where they can't leave, and any of these other guys can leave. So if somebody down the road is paying better, they can go.
So you take that bonus, then they got to pay it all back.
If they don't stay the four years, correct.
How long does it take a normal individual to go from base salary to corporal?
Four years. It's an automatic promotion to PFC after two, and then automatically to corporal after four.
Okay, now to that test. Well, that was the only reason I was bringing that up.
That's concerning, because if they're that close, we could have other guys leave if
they can make. I mean, that was the only reason I was, I mean, if, how many are you down there now? Two?
Guys, it comes across the board. I mean, we deal with it. At where I work as well, trying to get folks to come in, some of these places on these skilled positions, you have, you offer a bonus to get some sort of commitment, to get people to apply. I mean, you're example, technicians, people that work on your car, I mean, they're hard to find right now. I think officers are hard to find. I mean, how many applicants do we have right now, Jay, for those two?
There's eight people. We take them to test.
They got to pass it to.
You know, one of the things that concerns me, when you look at the big picture, this year's police budget, so our total city budget is a little over $4 million, say $5 million. This year's police budget's $1.8 million. $1.8 million, okay? And, you know, there's a lot that goes into this, and of course, you know, through the years, several times I brought before this body and asked to do some pay adjustments across the board, you know, to, you know, just as you say, you know, I think sometimes when you give, you got to get something. And so I'm where I'm at right now because of, you know, when you look at the total big picture of what we invest in law enforcement, and of course, you know, it concerns me, that number continues to edge up, and you know, how, you know, how at some point in time we fund it. You know, I've even asked the chief to, in some cases, you know, can we do with less? You know, can we do, you know, can we do with less in numbers? And of course, when you look at what we cover and what the expectation is for policing and security and protection in this city, it's really hard to do with less. And so again, you know, I don't know, and you know, when you look down at these numbers, I can't speak to Fayetteville and Oak Hill, but when I look at these big cities and see what they're paying, I can kind of understand that in numbers that they have, that they employ, and budgeting, and, you know, and the other thing of it is, is sustainability. It's not just throwing pay raises today, but how do you sustain? I present this today because the chief came to me and, you know, said, what, you know, what can we do? You know, what ideas do we have that, you know, number one, we can even get people to apply? And number two, you know, what kind of incentives? Now, I will tell you that we've done a $5,000 bonus before. What was the commitment on that, Jay?
Two years.
Two years. We did a $5,000 bonus for two years. Do you remember how many of those we paid?
One, and he's still here.
I was saying we paid two.
Did we?
I think we did two.
Maybe we did.
Yeah.
Here's just a couple of numbers that'll show you. It's just not Somersville, it's down. Charleston has 173 allotted police officers, and they're 163, so they're down 10. Huntington, 108, and they currently have 92. Morgantown, 76, and they got 60. Willing, 78, and they got 70. So everybody's short on officers, and that's why everybody's kind of poached off of everybody else. And the state police just did the hiring drive, and they took a bunch of people.
But that's why I also wondered if our numbers are below, which even I know we're not getting it every now and then, if our numbers are below all these departments right around us, I mean, even with a bonus, would people not be more apt to look at Oak Hill and say, hey, you know, in 10 years, I'll be making 10 more thousand or 6 more thousand, plus I get these benefits there, would I not be better off going there? I mean, do officers look into stuff like that, where we ought to be concerned with that?
Actually, for as long as me and Robert's been here, we've been really, really lucky about the retention from going department to department. I think we've only lost maybe three or four.
I don't necessarily mean guys leaving. I mean, if you're trying to get people to apply.
Yes, yes.
And they're right here within 30 minutes of two other departments, and they say, well, as soon as my bonus is up here in a few years, I'll be making more money there, so I'll just go apply there today instead of applying here.
Really have to buy the big ass, all that, too.
I guess it depends on where you live.
Yeah. Yeah, and you see Charleston, their bonus is $15,000, paid in lump sum, and you have to, you have to give them a five-year commitment. So you take that guy, you take that guy, that'd be 57,000. Shoot, that puts him right under the captain day, the year that he gets that $15,000 bonus.
It just goes against my grain to have to pay somebody a damn bonus to work.
I agree. I do agree.
I mean, I'm sorry, but.
I think, I think this is just recruitment.
Jay, based on past experience, what do you expect of the applicants coming in? Attorney and officers?
Out of the eight in the past, probably 50% will pass. Three to four. That's in the past, usually 50%, and then we'll do background investigations and.
So we may end up, what, two or three?
Yeah.
Out of the eight?
Yes. And we started with 13, and that many failed PT tests.
Do you think they have to have a $4,000?
I mean, that's an incentive, but.
Another one?
But like Chuck says, the people here now will be aggravated. But the ones you're bringing in to put under a commitment, they're going to be happy, so where's the median?
Well, but you don't want those ones you got now, man, not doing their job.
I also think that training is a game changer too, with the length of time that you're out there, and you gotta wait to get trained up and certified. I mean, that's a game changer too. I mean, you're always forced to have to go out and to get creative like this to try to bring in somebody with that experience. And you can't put a dollar amount on that. I mean, what it takes to bring somebody up to speed to a certain level, there's a dollar amount that you can put on that too. So I think that's a game changer for me, is the amount of time, when you say out into January?
Yeah.
I mean, I can't imagine. Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine.
And we've done that a lot. I mean, we've had to carry people.
Yeah. I mean, you put a dollar amount on that.
Uncertified guys. And they do get more points if they're certified, so usually if a certified guy's willing to go to work for you, he goes to the top of the stack. I mean, all the other, I mean, tests and all that, you know, I mean, he does it just automatically, but he gets more points being certified.
Correct. And Jay, as you're running short, how does that affect the other officers? Does shifts begin to get changed? Does vacations get delayed? I mean, when you're short, does some of that stuff happen?
Actually, right now, we're lucky because we have two officers that are assigned to the high school and the middle schools, so we got the two officers working the road, which are, which are taking the place of the two that we lost.
But we lose them, the school comes.
Sure happens soon, next year. That's what we're lucky.
So that puts some pressure upon those other officers.
Yes.
Creates more work, different shifts and things of that nature that might, might be an issue.
How many officers does Fayetteville and Oak Hill live in?
You know what? I don't know about Fayetteville. Oak Hill is pretty much the same as us, 14, 16. And I'm guessing Fayetteville's close to the same.
So I guess what we're looking at, counsel, is I want to bring back to you the next meeting, a sign-on bonus, a recruiting incentive, and what we're proposing right now is $10,000. Is that something that you'll fly with, or do we need to reconsider? Whatever we do, we need to get ready and have, ready for approval at the next meeting. So I just kind of need some feedback here on where you're leaning.
Well, I'm not a fan of the bonus.
Okay.
If it's the only way we got to go, that's the way we'll go, but, you know, I, I think if you offer people the right benefit, and, and if, you know, we're going to give you this money, and if you perform and you stay with us, you'll make this money later. That's an old-school outlook, I understand that, but.
I just, I just, I don't know. I just think it would be better for people to be able to look at as a long-term benefit than just a short term. Because I mean, even in four years, if once this is up, and then they decide to go somewhere and make more money, then we're just out that officer, and then we're sitting right back in this position again, saying, well, we're down two or three officers, what are we going to have to give next time? So, I mean, I just, I would rather it be a more long-term play that they're interested in than a short term. Whether that be, what was it you were talking about, longevity, or compared?
Yeah, we can't do longevity, because that, longevity is not a, not a, not a choice for us, because you got to apply to the whole city.
I just mean something long-term that they look at and say, that's where I'd like to go and work and stay there. That'd be a good department, or not, well, I'll go for four years or so.
I'm dealing with it. Similar situation on these positions where you're trying to see dwindling applicants and folks that are going to retire and so forth. I'm not opposed to this. I feel it's something that we have to look for when we recruit some people and for, for that term. I look at it this way, too. If I get someone for four years, I've gotten someone for four years. It's just a little bit, it's, it's, I'm just dealing with a similar scenario at a specialized position. I think a police officer is a specialized position. That is a difficult position, and not many people, especially in our times right now, where you just watch the news, they, they, folks are probably, probably, they are less hesitant to maybe apply for a police officer position just because of what they have to face.
We at the City of Summersville had two guys leave the job, didn't go to another police force, just left the job, don't want to be, you know, with the policing environment, don't want to be police officers. So we here at the city have lost two guys that have walked away and are still in this community, but walked away from policing because then we're going to do the work, we're going to be police officers. It's tough. It is. It's a tough job.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I don't think it'll get any better than a four-year commitment. You know, so it, it's not that I'm totally against that. You know, it's just a.
What it is, Stevie nailed it, it's a recruiting tool to get them in, to get them in the door, to get, you know, to get, you know, and then, of course, obviously, when you got some kind of incentive like that, you know, you're going to get better quality, too, from an applicant standpoint, because there is something else to come here for. You know, there is an incentive. You know, it's, it's, and, you know, Brandon, I, I hear what you're saying about, you know, you know, you know, in no means am I wanting to topsy-turvy the, the police force by giving a bonus. Incidentally, you know, we did the bonus before, and, and I'm almost positive, Jay says one, I think we paid two $5,000 bonuses. And, you know, still have one of those guys with us today. As a matter of fact, the guy we took to court, was that a $5,000 bonus? No, that was, that was his academy stuff, yeah. How about on this end, Mike?
I'm, I'm in the middle. I've just, I, I got to sleep on this. It's a lot of information thrown at you for 15 minutes here. I understand, but I, I need to sleep on it.
I think I'm okay with the, the bonus. However, I think we need to look seriously at long-term retention of who we add.
Yes.
Along with this, you know? I think we have to be competitive.
And maybe it's out of the times, there may be no quick fix. You may want to reach out to some professional people and get creative. There may be something besides just copying what another department does. I don't know. But this is probably going to be something thereby deals with. So it's, you know, this is not going to make this go away. I don't think.
That $10,000 bonus?
Yes, sir.
It'll make these other 14?
14.
I mean, will they be upset?
I've, I've heard some complaints.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, but you don't want to get those 14 all upset, and they don't do their work and that. That's why I, I mean, I feel like, you know, you, like Chuck.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I think we've got to look to you for guidance on, you know, you know your department, you're responsible for running, and, and you tell us what they'll swallow and what they won't, you know? And, and I think, I think we need to look to your guidance to say, I think this is what we need to do. And, and if that's your judgment, then between you and the mayor, come to us, and then I, I think that's a decision we'll make.
I feel short-term, this is relatively a pretty good approach to what we're trying to achieve in the short term. I also know that a lot of your, your companies are now beginning to really market large markets where people are wanting to relocate. I mean, since COVID, COVID's another game changer, and it changed a lot of things. A lot of people are trying to move out of larger markets. I mean, it could be worth spending a little money HR-wise to try to promote, and when you do that, you're trying to promote people that are wanting to leave the larger markets. And as I look at some of this, some of the larger markets, it's not like they're going to take a pay cut to come here. And the reason these people are wanting to move out of large markets is, is simple. They went away from the numbers and into more like nature, into smaller communities. And we, we are very attractive in regard to that, and there's ways to spend some money and try to recruit out of those larger markets. And basically, you're, you've got to put a pretty nice package together and really market your area to make it not only the police force, but the area itself, to try to relocate people into the area. I think long-term, that might be an opportunity to, to roll. I mean, short-term, I think both, I, I would be in agreement with it. I think we should go toward that bonus now. But I also think there's some opportunity, there's a lot of people wanting to move out of these large markets, mostly because of COVID. And obviously, crime rate is a little crazy in those large markets. I mean, you might be shocked. You might be able to spend $3,000 or $4,000 marketing in those large markets to try to promote coming to Summersville, West Virginia. Maybe it'll get some people that way.
Okay, counsel, anybody else? What I would ask you to do after you get time to think about the information that you had in your packet and the information I provided you tonight, which is merely just the salaries, if you would, please feel free to reach out to me, be it email, phone call, give me some feedback prior to the next meeting. If, if I don't hear from a presence of you all, I will tweak the presentation that's before you. I will revisit conversation with the chief. We've had a lot of conversation. What you see presented before you is, in lieu of all of the factors that we knew coming in tonight, you know, what, what we, what our needs are, you know, where the current department and how they feel, you know, all of that was taken into consideration with this presentation. So anyway, if there's any additional feedback that you have, please reach out to me. I will have something prepared for approval for the next city council meeting.
We do.
Okay, moving right along. Reporters report.
Thanks, Mayor. My, mine's rather short. We had, I did want to give an update on the Airbnb with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We had a good meeting Thursday night, several things discussed, and the things discussed had to be taken to our, our city attorney. So just so, I know Brandon and, and Mr. Eflin are on my, are on our commission, Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow morning. I want to give Amy, she's hearing about it for the first time, we'll give Amy permission to send out an email. Our city attorney indicated that two weeks was not enough time to look into the things that we had on the plate for him and asked for, or asked me to delay our meeting. So we're going to delay that meeting, put it on hold. So tomorrow, I'll be sending out a cancellation. It was two Thurs, two more Thursdays from now, I think's when it was.
Yeah. It was actually scheduled for the 21st.
21st is what it was scheduled. At 6:00, we're going to go ahead, and I'll be canceling that in the morning and giving Mr. Tucker enough time to investigate that and look into that a little bit further. Okay?
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, mayor's report. Let me run down some things, counsel, that I think are important. First of all, I want everybody to know that the Nicholas County Fair is next week, July 21st through the 23rd, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Counsel, you remember, we supported the fair through a council grant. I think the fair board has done a swell job. This is the 97th Annual Nicholas County Fair. They've got all kinds of, they've got entertainment every night. The, the fair board, I think, is working overtime. I give them big shout-out and kudos for what they've done to, you know, get this fair back on track. So it's not this week, but next week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Tomorrow, for you veterans that are here on council, or any that may get this information, which will probably be too late, but is a Veterans Appreciation at the Nicholas County Park. It's a, basically a 9:30 to 3:30 event. They do games, they take, actually have transportation set up from the park to the lake for lake tours. Want to thank Sarge's Dive Shop, Summersville Lake Marina, and LZ Rainell for putting on this Veterans Appreciation, and it's well-attended by, by veterans. So that's tomorrow at Veterans Memorial Park. Want to remind everybody that the West Virginia Goldwing Riders are in town this weekend, July 14th through the 16th, downtown here Friday night at the pavilion. They'll all come in with their bikes. There's actually some community interaction stuff with them, where the community, community can boat on their favorite bike. Of course, it's also music at the pavilion. All this activity takes place from 6:30 to 8:30. And also, it's a favorite of the Goldwing Riders, we'll be serving ice cream again. Want to let you know, counsel, that the city received its second round of the federal funding, the CARES money. We were deposited last week another $723,615.61. We received it last week. As a matter of correspondence, counsel, I just wanted to give you some, some heads-up on some correspondence that you, I, and the city employees have received. This correspondence comes from Steve Ferguson. He wanted the city to know how much he appreciates the work that's been done at Northside and continue to be done. He thinks that's a primary area that people that travel to our city visit, and so he just wanted to say that the impression that he believes it leaves on people that travel through there with the work that the city's done and continues to do, also with all the businesses out there, that it leaves a great impression on people about our city. So he asked me to please pass this on to you and the city team, the city employees that actually do the work. So thank you, Steve. Counsel, we also received a thank you from Mary Ann Taylor for the council contribution. They all went out July 1st, all the council contributions. This one here is a thank you for the contribution that was made, again, to the children's store and the many children that benefit from that. Also received a thank you from the West Virginia Quilt Festival. Again, they just think we've got a wonderful city. They're so thankful for everything that's done for them. They give a big shout-out to the Ranin Conference people and just can't believe how well they're taken care of. And by the way, they also said that they're certainly looking forward to coming back next year in 2023. The last one is from the Farmer's Tailgate Market. We do a co-op with them and participate, give them some funds. Actually, our funds pay for the porta potty they set up at the food, at the farmer's market. So I think it's also great that they send us a thank you and recognize what we do for them as well. So that's the correspondence that I've received on behalf of us. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. How about any council, any council reports? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
The first and the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.